Good afternoon. My name is Tony Gross. I'm president of the Vallejo City Unified School District Governing Board, and it's August 31st, 2022, at 5:04. And this is a special meeting of the Governing Board. At this time, I would like to call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Trustee Ubaldi.
I'm here.
Trustee Fox.
Present.
Trustee Young.
Present.
Vice President Gardner.
Present.
President Gross.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, would those who can, please rise for our pledge of allegiance. Before we go on to adoption of the agenda, the superintendent has a very important but disturbing message for us, a moment for us.
Thank you, President Gross. I wanted to announce with great sadness the loss of a student of ours, 7th grader of Mare Island Fitness Academy. We don't know a lot of information on it, but we do know that he's left us, and we wanted to take a moment of silence. I'll read to you just a quick message from Tamara Madsen, the principal at Mare Island. She says, "Mare Island Health and Fitness Academy friends and family, with a heavy heart, I share the news of the passing of one of our own, 7th grader Kamani Gray. Kamani joined our community last year and was popular among his classmates. He loved music and will be missed. We shall be sharing the passing of Kamani with our students today." This was, I believe, yesterday. "In addition, we have academic support and mental health support onsite for those who need it. For more information on how to support your student, please visit www.vcusd.org/mentalhealth. If you have any questions, please feel free to reach out." So if we could take a moment, and then if we could close the meeting in his honor as well.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, adoption of the agenda. Can I have a motion?
President, I move that we adopt the agenda before us.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved in second. Roll call, vote, please.
Trustee Ubaldi.
Aye.
Trustee Fox.
Aye.
Trustee Young.
Aye.
Vice President Gardner.
Aye.
President Gross.
Aye. Adoption of the agenda has been cleared. Okay, next consent item. We have approval of contract between VCUSD and Greater Vallejo Recreational District. Can I have a motion to accept?
I'll move to accept.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. That consent item has been moved in second. A roll call, vote, please.
Trustee Ubaldi.
Aye.
Trustee Fox.
Aye.
Trustee Young.
Aye.
President Gardner.
Aye.
And President Gross.
Aye, thank you. And next, we have information and study workshop. Just superintendent Spaulding, are you going to go ahead with appointment first?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, President Gross. Two items tonight that we brought you back for, for a special board meeting. And the first item is the provisional appointment due to failure to elect a governing board trustee for Area 1. And I want to give a little bit of background, and I don't know if there are people who are tuning in, but I think it's good to get a little bit of information out, just kind of where the elections are and what the board is tasked with doing over the next several weeks. You know, and just kind of where we are. I think everybody knows it's election season. August 12th was the last day to file to file for a candidacy in one of three trustee areas that are up for election this year. Trusty Area 1 is Mare Island and South Vallejo. Vallejo, pretty much south from Tennessee and west of the freeway. There is trustee Area 3, which is mostly the areas behind Hogan, Wardlaw, Bethel, kind of up in the hills, all the way up to Hidden Brook. And then trustee Area 5, which is Glen Cove, and then the areas around Pennycook, Hogan, Vallejo Charter, Cave, and Stephan, to the freeway, I think. I think I've got the geography of that pretty clear. So what, this will be the second round and the completion of our transition from an at-large school district for board elections to a trustee area school election. So trustees, Dr. Young and trustee Gardner were both elected in the last election with the first elections from trustee areas. And then this will complete the full transition. One of the things that, well, the reason that a lot of school districts and cities and water boards and fire boards all over the state have gone to trustee areas is a contemporary interpretation and implementation of the California Voting Rights Act. And there's a handful of attorneys who have really pushed on this to have city governments, school boards, other electoral, elected boards basically transition from at-large elections to trustee area elections, you know, under the notion that there's a dilution of democracy, that there's, you know, that this allows groups and communities, and smaller communities, neighborhoods, to be better represented. That's the theory. What has happened in our district with this latest election and what is happening in three school districts, we have six school districts in this county, three of them are experiencing the same thing, that we have trustee areas that have come up on the August 12th deadline for filing a candidacy, and that deadline comes and goes without a candidate for a trustee area. So we have no candidate at this time, and the election deadline for filing is over. And so we have no candidate in Area 1. We do have a single candidate who filed for Area 3, and because he's the only candidate who filed, it's an uncontested election, he defaults to, you know, to join the board in December and will be sworn in at that time. And then, of course, we have Area 5, which is contested between two sitting board members and another candidate. So there are three candidates for that. So I want to kind of explain and give that background because I think there will be people who will ask questions, I think inevitable questions, like, well, why is the school board choosing one of its own members? Why, how does that happen? Well, it happens when there's a failure, it's called failure to elect, that there's no candidate that moves forward. We're in the same boat as Benicia. They have a trustee area like this. And Travis Unified has a trustee area like this. So three of the six districts in this county have a failure to elect situation where they have to appoint another board member. That appointment must be made according to ed code and according to our bylaws and the CSBA, you know, the CSBA policies they've developed. That has to be done prior to the date of election. So this board must advertise, interview, you know, to advertise, get applications, interview, and make a selection prior to the election day, which is November 8th, if I remember correctly, Tuesday, November 8th. So if you will draw your attention, is it up here? Can we, I'm just going to run through a couple of things. I'm not going to belabor it, but there are a couple of things that I highlighted that I thought were important to share. And I know you've read this. Probably the most helpful document in this, although I have also sought legal assistance on this as well. And we have a little bit of experience in previous years with something like this, having to fill a board position. But probably some of the best information I was able to get, I was able to get from this, filling a board vacancy document that California School Boards Association produced. They produced it in 2012, but it is still timely. And they do speak precisely to districts that have trustee areas. And you'll recall that we did some work, trustees Young and Gardner will remember, we did some work as a board policy committee a couple of years ago on updating some of our policies. And one of the policies we updated was how to fill a vacancy because we had moved from an at-large electoral district to a trustee areas electoral district. So I'm going to go to page... Okay. So if you would go to page 4. So basically, I'm going to go just really quickly through some notes that I took. And you can go through the, I know you've all looked at this, and you can look at it later as a resource. But this mirrors the policy that's in place for us as well. It talks about number 13. It says, "A failure to elect is a situation where no candidate or an insufficient number of candidates have filed to run for a board seat." And so that's the situation we're facing. You go to page 5. It gives some information on what is you're supposed to do. In some ways, the failure to elect basically requires that you treat it like a provisional appointment, but in some ways, you don't treat it like a provisional appointment. So here's the part where you do treat it like a provisional appointment. "When authorized by law to make a provisional appointment to fill a vacancy on the board," although this isn't really a provisional appointment, but this is the language that determines what you do. "The board shall advertise in the local media and solicit candidate applications or nominations." This is, "A committee consisting of less than a quorum of the board shall ensure that applicants are eligible for board membership and announce the names of the eligible candidates. The board shall interview the candidates at a public meeting, accept oral or written input, and select the provisional appointment by majority vote." The reason I highlighted this part is the committee. In each case where you're making a selection, there's a committee, can't be a majority because that'd be a violation of the Brown Act, but a committee of two, I would recommend that it be the president and vice president of the board. Those two would actually look over the applications and just ensure that people have met the minimum qualifications. And then there's an affidavit that we would have each candidate fill out to also, you know, basically say that they are also self-certifying, that they meet the basic and minimum requirements. And they fill that out under penalty of perjury. So that's part of what's there. There's not a lot for that group of two to do other than to certify that the people who are putting in are eligible to run. And the other thing we've talked about with, we've already called Solano County Elections Office, and they've offered to assist us with determining the residency requirement. So they have a way of determining if people are actually living where they say they are and living in the trustee area that they are running for. They will assist us with that eligibility piece. But I'm looking to do that as we get closer to the actual interview date. If you go to page 6, there's a whole series of things on appointment due to failure to elect. "When a vacancy occurs because no candidate or insufficient number of candidates have been nominated, a failure to elect, the district election will not be held, and the board shall appoint a qualified person to the office." So that's what we do. "This appointment shall be made at a meeting prior to the day fixed for the election, and the appointee shall be seated at the organizational meeting as if elected at the district election." What that means is that, as I mentioned, that selection must be made prior to November 8th and that that person, once selected, would take office when other people took office and when we had our organizational meeting in December, which I believe, is it, do you know if it's?
Or the...
14th, I believe, or? It's the second December, it's the second December meeting, is our annual organization meeting. So that they would do like we did. And then if you go to page 7, the procedure for selecting interviewing candidates should be the same as the procedures for provisional appointments, which is why I read to you the portion of the provisional appointments. Now, what follows, if you go to page 9, is a candidate information sheet. This is really kind of the application. This is a template that CSBA produces. I'm recommending to the board that we follow the CSBA templates, and that we follow the CSBA interview questions, application, all those things, so that it's cleanest, it's best. Remember, CSBA, we belong to, you know, we pay dues for, and they have, you know, the legal resources to develop these kinds of templates so that we can do this in a manner that is cleanest, best, most transparent, most open. Because remember, this selection and the interviews must occur in open session. So we're here, and when the day comes that we're actually, you know, the board is actually interviewing and then deliberating and then making a decision on who they would select, that's all done here with the cameras rolling. That's, you know, so I would recommend strongly that we stick to the script on this one and that we're just, just so that no one at a later day can challenge the manner in which we conducted this, that it's, you know, it's absolutely clean. So you'll see the candidate information sheet. You probably looked at it, but I encourage you to look at it again. That's what I'm recommending we use. That's on page 9. 10. Then there are suggested candidate interview questions. That's on page 11. I would recommend we use those as well. Again, those have been developed by CSBA, I think. I looked at them. They are very timely, they're very relevant. But again, it means that, you know, it's a transparent and objective process. So I would recommend that the board follows that. Then there's some information following page, some recommendations, page 12. "Evaluating a candidate and ask some questions for the board to think about." Does the candidate know the political boundary and physical geography of the school district? Have a layperson's relationship to public education? Make a habit of withholding judgment on critical issues until the facts are available. So there are a variety of questions for the board to think about in terms of how they would want to, you know, select a good board member, you know, in the absence of an election. And then there's a lot of ed code that follows, and I won't go through all that. So that's primarily what I wanted to bring to you tonight. But to kind of sum it up, what we would need to do is we would need to select a date prior to the election, the actual election date, to make this determination, to both interview and to decide as a board who would serve in that Area 1 seat. I'm proposing that we do that on October 19th. That gives us a little bit of wiggle room between October 19th, which is a regular school board meeting, and November 8th, which is the actual election date, if for some reason it took longer. We have a November, I believe, 3rd board meeting? November? November 2nd, okay. Couldn't do the 16th because that's after the election, but we still have a November 2 election. Or it could be done, it could be done in a special board meeting if necessary, but it would have to be an open meeting. So that gives us a little bit of time. I'm recommending that we collect the actual applications and ask that they be submitted directly here on physical paper, not emails, so they don't get lost, but on physical paper, either through mail or hand-delivered. And there'll be a packet that we'll put together, you know, for, with that application and the affidavit and whatever information we need to collect. I'm asking that, or I'm recommending that we do that October 7th. So that's a few days ahead of the October 19th date, but that gives us the time to make sure we've got all the right documentation. It makes, gives us time to convene that subgroup that would make sure that everybody who has submitted is eligible. And that would give us time to put it on the agenda, make the contacts to the people, set up the interview times during that meeting, you know, and do that. So it gives us a little extra time. And then I'm recommending that we advertise as soon as possible. We had put September 1st. I can tell you that's tomorrow, and we're not going to be able to advertise by then. But I want to be able to advertise within the next week or so to give us about a good five or six weeks where it's out there. The law is very interesting, and I checked this out with our attorney, Ramon Munoz. I said, you know, it says that you shall advertise it once in a paper of wide circulation in your district. And I said, well, is there anything that prohibits us from doing it more than once? And he said, no. He said, I read that to be at least once. And I'm thinking for us, we want to probably do it a couple of times at least so that people are aware. Because I don't think we want to get down to October 7th. And again, nobody puts in, and now what do we do? And there's a 60-day clock that starts ticking, you know, before we could be forced into another election. So we want, I think we want to get this, you know, done and really, you know, draw candidates for this position. So that's what I'm proposing. It's not an action item, but this is what I'm, you know, so I'm just kind of looking for head nods and green lights, you know, to go forward with this. And I just wanted to make sure that you understood the process. And I wanted to make sure that, you know, the viewing public understands a little bit of the context, you know, for how this happens. You know, everybody on this board believes in democracy. Everybody on this board wants to see that, you know, that the people on this board are elected by the public. But if we wind up in a situation where nobody comes forward to put their names up for election, then this is the process that ed code and our board policy gives us in this circumstance. And in this case, we'll have to do this with one of our positions. Does that make sense? Any questions?
I guess you would, very quick. Oh, trustee Ubaldi.
Thank you, President Gross. I have informed various people about this possibility. But the biggest question I have is when they look at the website, they cannot find the district boundaries.
The district map for Area 1?
Yeah.
We'll make sure that that gets put up prominently. And we have it actually attached to your item, but we'll use the same map and make sure that that's in a prominent spot. We should probably put an item on the board that says, you know, Area 1, you know, so that everyone knows exactly where to go to and that they can get, you know, the documents as well.
Second question is, the day that the interview takes place, you expect that we take an action on that same day and make the decision? Is that correct?
Yeah, that's what I would propose. And I've seen it done that way before typically. I think the other benefit of that is that the whole process is transparent. So, you know, for, so for the viewing public, they know that whoever's being selected had to come in, interview at that time. The board had to rattle it around and make a final decision. And I think, just from an optical standpoint, I think it looks better when that's done all at once.
Third question is, would the application form be available to the trustees prior to the 19th?
The completed application form?
Yes, sir.
Yes, we, well, if it's, if it's held at a regular meeting, we'd have to post it 72 hours ahead of time anyways. So yeah, you would have it ahead of time.
That's all my questions, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Young.
Is there any possibility that we can make the application a little bit more easier to access for accessibility?
In terms of like...
Or is it just applying?
Like a fillable PDF?
Yeah.
We could do that.
Yeah, because I was having difficulty. I was trying to do a suit over, you know, trying to see, yeah, no.
But we have the technology. We could do that. We could do that. But we do want it, we still want it to be printed and delivered by hand. I don't want, I don't want, I don't want anything to get lost in email. So many things do get lost in email, and things get routed and spam-filtered and all that. So I'd want to make sure that people are either mailing it or bringing it.
I think that would be smooth, you know? And if you have to have a signed affidavit, have the tool there that you could log in and then sign it.
We might have to have it so they can print it and then sign it. Because if they have to put a wet...
Then they have to, they have to, if they print it, then they're going to have to re-scan it and then send it.
Well, we're not looking for them to resend. We're not, we're not looking for these to be electronically sent. We're looking for these to be submitted, either mailed or hand-delivered.
I'm trying to get...
I don't trust...
I'm trying to get techie, you know.
Yeah, I don't, for something like this, I don't trust email. You know, and I know that if people are putting, if people are filing, for example, for candidacies, they have to go down to the electoral office and hand over...
Because they have to pay money.
Correct. Well, we're not asking for money. But I think, I think it's better for us to be collecting that because I think that we just can better account for it and make sure that nothing gets lost and no one can later say, oh, I emailed it to you. What do you mean you didn't get it? So that's the way I'd like to proceed with that.
But it would be nice if it could be a PDF.
We can work on that to make it easy for them to actually fill it out and print it.
They gotta print it out and then bring it down here and then make it a whole lot easier.
Correct. Yeah, we could do that.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Oh, okay. No more questions then.
Thank you. More to come. You'll get additional information, and we'll get that process started next week or so.
Okay. Next, we're going on to our strategic plan. So again, Mrs. Spaulding, you have the lead on this.
Thank you, President Gross. So I attached to this item for tonight some mockups of what the items on the strategic plan we've been working on lately might look like in a pamphlet that we would produce. So these are examples. I don't want anyone to feel like this, these are drafts. These are examples. They're mockups, really. They're not really even drafts. So I don't want anyone to feel like this is the final, this is, you know, this is the final piece. But I thought it might be good for the board to see, you know, kind of get a visual impact of what it might look like, you know, once we have this. So when we last met on this particular topic, it was to construct a mission statement, a vision statement, and a set of core beliefs and values. a vision statement, and a set of core beliefs and values. And I believe that we did that in July, correct? I believe we did that in July, the last meeting on this. And so we, we were, you know, we were over here in a little, in a little square table, and I took copious notes, and some people gave me some notes afterwards, and I took a look at it, and I made some revisions. This reflects a number of those revisions. Although there are some that I didn't ultimately make. For example, when you go to the core beliefs and values, and it talks about we believe, and then we stand for, and some had talked about, well, maybe we reverse that. We stand for, and then we believe. But when I started kind of looking at how that would flow, the voice of my eighth-grade English teacher was in my ear saying, like, that doesn't flow at all. Like, how can you write that? So I left it this way, but I did say in this particular, in this particular draft, it says, we believe, just once. And then all this, you know, all the language that's in regular font, you know, talks about the things that we believe. And then we stand for is said each time with the, you know, with the strong and bold-faced assertions and statements that we make. What I recall from that meeting is that by and large, the board seemed, seemed happy with the belief statements and the, and the vision statements, you know, thought maybe about, some had thought about maybe reversing it. But other than that, it was pretty much left intact, you know, that this was what people wanted to do. Now, when it came to the mission statement, the vision statement, the aim statement, I proposed a vision statement that I have reconstructed now as an aim statement because the word aim was used. And I wanted to, you know, you can, we can change it if you like. But I wanted to kind of put something aspirational out there for our community and our staff to see, to say, this is where we want to be. It talks about being the pride of our community, schools that are the pride of our community, and the envy of the region. And, and that's where I'd like to see us be. And even if it's not something that the board wants to include, I'm just going to put that in a little Post-it note and put it in my desk because that's really what I would like to see, you know, in terms of how we're doing. But I made it an aim statement. The mission statement, I cut out a lot of verbiage that the board had asked me to cut out. There was a lot in there about being a community that's resilient and creative and all these, you know, and drawing on our resources and folks and so the, that's a lot in a mission statement. So I cut it down and made a couple of changes that people had asked me to make to make that a little bit shorter and clearer. And then the vision statement that I included was one that Dr. Young had proposed and, you know, that we were talking about that night. So I thought that maybe all three could exist, an aim statement, a mission statement, or a vision statement. What I would like from the board tonight, and we're not really seated for, you know, kind of a workshop-y approach like we were last time, I'm hoping that you've all had a chance to look this over and read them carefully. I think you have. And I'd like to kind of get, kind of get this finished tonight soon, if we can. And here's why. We have, we have a, you know, a set of pillars. We have a set of tenants. We've already called out certain strategic initiatives. You know, those are in my, those are in my evaluation goals, but we've also called that out. So we're starting, the strategic plan train is starting to leave the station, but still needs, you know, some wheels and a conductor and some other things. I'd like to get that done because once we have this in place, the pillars are ready to go. You've all seen those. The tenants are ready to go. You've all seen those. And some of our early strategic initiatives, things that we're looking to try to start tackling this year, those are ready to go as well. The sooner we can have this done, we can build, put all those together, work with Selena, take it through the, through the magic of graphic, you know, graphic arts, and then produce basically what, what our strategic plan would look like in a pamphlet or a small booklet, bring that back to the board for final approval, and, and then move forward. And I've heard board members talk about, hey, maybe we want to do some rollout. Maybe we want to have some meetings about this. Maybe we want to do, you know, town hall, something like that. The earlier we can get this done, the earlier we can get the rest of that process started. But I think we're close. You know, based on what I, I looked at my notes again, because we had a lot of conversation, and I looked at my notes again afterwards, and I, and I saw that there was very little that people were really looking to change drastically. And some of the two things that they had asked to change, like the mission statement, I just went ahead and changed. So I think we're close. So I'm hoping we're close, and I'm just going to, like, turn it over, President Gross, to you, to turn it over to the comments that are popping up with green lights.
Okay. And we have a couple of comments. Trustee Young, I think your light went on first.
I have several concerns, questions or whatever they are. First of all, I work by timelines, and what is your timeline, Superintendent Yubaldi, that you want us to work within?
For this, tonight.
Huh?
For this particular item tonight. Because remember, we spent, we spent a good deal of time in July on this. And, and so I'm bringing back some revisions, but I don't know that it requires a whole lot more other than to, you know, maybe there's some small things, but I think we're pretty close to what people had expressed in our last meeting on this to having it done.
So my second question, is this the time for me to tell you what I think of this presentation? Or do I wait?
Well, are we, are we, are we talking the presentation and the way it's designed? Are we talking the verbiage? Because the verbiage is really what we're after tonight.
Okay, thank you for reeling me in.
The presentation is, this is more of a mockup to show you what it could look like. This isn't necessarily what it will look like.
Okay, I'm, the design, design.
Right. And I don't know that we, I would, I don't know that we want to get that far into it because I don't know that we want to do graphic design from the dais. But I think that we could look at what's actually in the verbiage, and you can imagine it here by seeing it, what it might look like in a nice shiny pamphlet. But I think it's the verbiage that I need from you all tonight so that we can get started and get this incorporated into the strategic plan.
Trustee Young, that's it? Oops, that's it? Okay. Trustee Gardner.
My two cents. I can't talk with this mask. Okay, from my perspective, I believe that the aim is the vision and should be best such, and that the vision statement should be the umbrella statement over the core beliefs and values. Because everybody, every, every student deserves to learn in a safe, inclusive environment. I don't necessarily think that that is a vision. That's what should be happening. I think the vision is more lofty, and I think that the aim is more lofty than what we have stated here. I think the mission is good. I think that the vision should, could be stated as all students deserve to learn in a safe, inclusive, and equitable environment, et cetera, et cetera, and have that as the overarching statement for the we believe. Have that statement, and then we believe that the crippling effect, does that make sense? So that's my two cents. I don't like the word aim. I like the word vision for that particular statement. It's really a vision statement.
Excuse me, Madam Trustee. I did not hear what, you do not like aim, but you prefer, what again?
No, I like the statement. I like it as the vision statement because it's lofty. I mean, this is how we envision. We want to be the pride of the community, the envy of other districts. That's our vision. The, where we have the vision, our vision, how it's stated, those are really, every district wants that. Every district wants for our students to learn in safe, inclusive environments. It's not so much a vision as it's more of a, it's more of a mission statement than a mission, as I'm concerned. But, but it could be the umbrella, the overarching statement for the next piece, the core beliefs and values. These all support that statement. Does that make sense?
Any other comments? My only one is, we talked before, I like the idea of just setting up a mission and a vision statement. And like Trustee Gardner said, we can, we can mesh, mesh the aim, the aim, sorry, the aim and the vision can go together. And then vision is part of, part of the pillars anyhow. But it's also, the pillars have that.
Right.
The belief statement has that. I'll put it like that. And, oh, did I miss him? Oh, I'm sorry. I missed out at the end. Trustee Yubaldi.
Thank you, President Gross. Our aim, is that used to be our goals?
Well, we, a lot, a lot of our goals are contained in the pillars and the tenants. But the aim is, the aim is more aspirational, and it could be an aim, it could be a vision. I, you know, I, I, I thought it was a good statement for where we could be and should be, you know, and something to aspire to. So you can call it an aim statement, you can call it a vision statement, if that's what you want to make it or whatever. And, or you don't have to have it at all because it's, I mean, it's, it's what the board wants to do. But I, the parts of that, and I think it speaks particularly to our, our schools, our district, our community, our staff, and our people, that if we desire to be the schools that are the pride of the community, the envy of the region, and the launchpad of bright and amazing futures, and productive and fulfilling lives for all our Vallejo students, wouldn't that be something? Wouldn't that be something? Isn't that something? I, I just think that, you know, I think we'll get called on that a lot, but we should be. You know, it just, it kind of, it kind of reminds me of, you know, the Declaration of Independence or, you know, the we, the people statement at the beginning of the Constitution. It's something that's really aspiration that you're always striving towards. I don't know if you ever get it, ever get all the way there, but it's a reminder of who you're supposed to be and where you're supposed to go. And I think it could be a powerful motivator to everyone who's associated with this organization. So that's why, I called a name statement, but like I said, it could be however you choose or not. You could, or you don't have to include it, but it's however you choose to define it if you want to keep it.
But I think when you read that, that would look like our, and you said, that's, what do we want to look like? And that's kind of our vision. We, we want to have this vision of, of, you know, being number one. That's kind of, and like what Trustee Yubaldi said, that, that vision has small goals embedded in there, and one of those goals would be what he was talking about. Another goal would be that inclusive inclusiveness. But our vision is to be, quote, number one, you know. So, and I see, you call it our aim. I just don't know if we want to put that up there and with the, with the mission and the vision. I still say aim is our vision. You know, that's, to me, that's what it looks like. But anyhow, Trustee Fox.
First, thank you for your work on this. It looks beautiful. I can start to see where we're going, and I remember all the hard work we did in July. In the aim statement, I love the part, the pride of our community. I love that word pride. But I'm seeing words that are what you want to strive for, like in a future. And to me, what you want to strive for, future tense, I see some of those in the aim as well that maybe should be vision, but as far as being the launchpad of bright and amazing futures and fulfilling our lives, to me, it's where you want to go. It's what we're going to do. The other ones, what we're going to do to get you there. The vision, I think someone else said it, it seems like a lot of districts, those are the words that are in there. I love the equitable environments that validates. That's a very strong sentence. I love that. But I'm understanding what I'm hearing from my colleagues, is it true that a vision is where you want to go? It's what you're, what, where you are, what will happen? So I'm seeing some of those will happen things in the aim, where we want to go in our, with our students for the future. But I love the words. I don't want to lose the words. I think you worked very hard, and they do express us. So perhaps switching those two would be the easiest thing to do, and we would still keep the wonderful words that we worked so hard in July and now. Anyways, that's my input. Thank you.
Okay. Trustee Young.
Within each one of these, I guess what I was looking for is to see more statements of equitability, equity in some of these statements. That's what the driving force is in we aim, we believe, what we're dealing with. So in order to meet what we're dealing with, it has something in these statements stating what it is.
If I could just comment-
I thought in July, we talked about that the, could these support those? And they do.
I think, I would, I would, I would pose that Trustee Gardner may have found the way for us to incorporate because there's, there's a lot of equity language in what we're now, what we're calling on this piece of paper, the vision.
Right.
That should, should be kept, and I think could be between these as a statement over the core values. I think one of the strongest equity statements I've ever seen is the very first core value. We believe that the crippling effects of systemic racism, discrimination, and marginalization have negatively impacted our students, our families, and our communities. I don't know too many school districts that put that on the wall. We stand for universal respect.
Yeah.
Full inclusion and full equity in our schools and practices. I want to make sure that we're going to specify not just school, like this is what we want in our schools, and our practices. So I think if you had kind of what Trustee Gardner had proposed, what we're now called, what is called the vision on this piece of paper, actually gets parked over all the we believe statements.
Right.
And the aim statement becomes the vision statement, and the mission statement is, you know, stays as is. I would, I would pose that, that gets us there, I think.
Yeah.
I mean, if you're okay with the whole, it has up to everybody, but-
Yeah, I agree with that, that scenario. Yeah, yeah. The other thing that I'm, I'm, I don't know about everybody else, but I'm a visual person. And the pictures that were examples is not diversified enough for me.
And, and like I said, this is mockup.
I know, but I'm stating my opinion of what I'm seeing. If I see that, and I see, then I look back at what we're, what we're striving for, the picture doesn't reflect what we're striving for. It needs to be a diversified showing, yeah, uh-huh, of our population. Our population should be reflected, bam.
Yeah, we have a lot of footage, so we'll, we'll make sure that we do that.
Oh, no lights? Trustee Young, you say have your light on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Are we clear? We okay?
We're good.
Okay. So I guess we have taken care of all of-
So am I hearing the board? Again, this is not an action item, so it's not really a vote, but I'm looking for, for head nods. What I'm hearing the board say is that the aim statement actually becomes, I'm going to do it in red ink here, the vision statement. That the vision statement becomes an overarching statement ahead of the core values. The core values are written as is, and we have a set of mission, vision, and core beliefs that we can incorporate into the remainder of the strategic plan. Head nods? Do I get head, do I have head nods? Thumbs up? Green lights? Okay. I want to thank the board for all the hard work on this and for really pressing a strategic plan. This is so important for this district, and it's been, over, the last strategic plan that I'm aware of that is a true strategic plan, Dr. Stephen Goldstone was working on and leading in the late 90s, and it was called Vision 2020. You know, he, he ultimately didn't stay to see that. I mean, he wasn't our superintendent anymore at one point, but, but he had a vision, and he was brought everybody together, much like we did with our SPAC, to bring other voices to the table. But this is like really hard work because this really, this says who you are and what you want us to be and what you stand for. And so it's, it's worth taking the time to do this, to get it just right for this group. And I hope that I was able to capture your thoughts and your beliefs. I think there's a lot of commonality in this, in this board, a lot of shared belief. I think it's captured here, and I'm excited about incorporating this and then, and then rolling this out. I imagine it's going to probably take a few weeks to, to put this all together and to do the graphic work we need to do, that kind of stuff, but I'm looking to bring it back for final approval to this board. Probably, I'm hoping, I'm hoping by the second September meeting, if possible. We'll have to see what, you know, is that not possible? First week in October? Okay, we'll work on it. But we're getting there. And we've been at this for a while. This is a commitment. The board, you know, asked for this some time ago. We were able to kind of get it started with Sephir and Associates about this time last year. And so it feels good tonight to be in a place where we're, we're pretty close to having this put together.
Trustee, Trustee Young, your light was on.
Am I on?
Yeah.
I know, I know. Well, thank you, Superintendent Spalding, but we also, I also, and I guess I can do a governance mindset on this. Thank you as a board, sitting on the team of this dynamic board, that we worked with a governance mindset in the direction that we wanted to see the school district go for the functioning and education- Um, uh, for the functioning and educational needs of our students, that's what we're here for. And thank you for your leadership and your mindset that kept us on track. And, um, now we almost have, um, we're almost at the first station, it's just the first station that we're at. Let's do this train ride, okay? Uh, it's not exactly the midnight train to Georgia, but, um, we're on our way. So, um, thank you.
I wanted to talk about the timeline, because I don't really see why this needs to go to October. Far as I'm concerned, I can copy and paste simply, I know you can too. So you're just deleting one, you're moving one, that's an easy, that'd take me less than two minutes. If we're talking about the graphics for Selena, I'm thinking if you change one of the pictures. Or do scenario A, B, and C with different backgrounds, I don't really see why this needs to go to October. I, I, I really don't, if you're just copying this onto different photos, and giving us different versions, why would it have to go to October? No, it's not on.
It's, it's a little more involved than that, it's, it's not so much cut and paste, we, we do the graphics. And, and we have it done professionally, and we make sure that, you know, we have, you know, certain color formations, we're using pictures. And remember, we're also incorporating the remainder of the strategic plan, which are the, the five pillars, and all the tenants that go with it, so we want to make sure we're selecting. Uh, you know, eh, good graphics, organizing in a way that's really visually appealing, so. It, it, it'll take, it, 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 it takes a little while.
Okay, but you understand.
Maybe we can get it done before October, but.
Well, because October, when we interviewing and doing other things with.
Correct.
One, so I'm just thinking, if we're just getting rid of the aim, moving that to above the core beliefs, and changing the vision to the, and, and you're, anyways, I just think. If, it doesn't have to be absolute, but we have a few things to look at to see where we're going. I'd rather move on with the other parts of the strategic plan and not let this hold us back.
No, well, remember that we have strategic initiatives that we're pursuing, and that's, that's something that I went.
I thought maybe this was.
No, 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 this isn't stop action, this is ju- that, that doesn't stop action, so we're still working on the things like. Communication and the eighth to ninth grade transition, and, you know, literacy and all, that, we don't stop on that to wait for a pamphlet.
Okay, so.
That continues, yeah, that does not stop, that train has left the station, this, this is, so we're painting the train as the train is going down. Down the tracks, but the train is going down the tracks, so we're not going to stop any of that work. It's just, we want to, we want to make this really visually appealing, we want this to be something that we can all be proud of, we want to be, something to get, that as it gets. Distributed around the community, people take, take notice, they look at it, wow, look at this. Um, and so, and that takes a little bit of artistry to do that, so.
And that's fine, now that I understand that it's not connected to.
It doesn't slow us down at all.
Then I'm fine with that, thank you.
Okay.
Selena, go ahead. Are you available? Okay, well, we had, uh, Trustee you baldy, I know your light's on.
Well, I, I, I was, I was going to make a statement, President Gross, not, not a question.
Well, go ahead.
Okay, yeah.
A question then that Selena could answer it.
Um. You know, this, this work we've, we've done is quite radical. And, uh, you know, for those folks who are in denial that racism has impacted our, our public system. Uh, we'll be rolling their graves or raising hell. This is a radical statement, so I just want us to recognize the importance of this statement. So I, I just, just, uh. I can't believe that we're, we're moving in this direction, but I, I'm thankful and, and grateful, thank you. Uh, that's another question, is this statement right, am I right?
Okay, thank you, Trustee you baldy, any other comments from the board, questions, statements, kudos?
I have, I have a comment.
Oh, Trustee Gardner, go ahead.
Okay, in response to, how, how, how sad it is that we think that this is a radical statement when it's just. That's all, you know, it's just. This is in your face as it should be.
Okay.
Uh, the, the pictures that you will be using, you, the, these are local folks that we have, which are beautiful pictures. But you have to get a professional picture someplace, right, that, that would authorize us to, to use them, correct?
Well, these are all from, well, most of these are from graduation, but there are going to be some from the younger grades, elementary school and middle school. But we've made sure to get media releases from all of their parents, so that we can use those photos.
I see, so it's, it's the release is what's important.
Correct.
Okay, I thought we need to have professional, okay.
I'm your professional photographer.
All right, thank you for that correction.
That it? Okay, I, I just want to say in kind of in closing, I want to thank the board. Superintendent, his cabinet, Selena, all with the publications, uh, you know, we've been. Some of us have been waiting for this for years, literally for years, and, uh, now that it's starting to roll out. And I think, who, who, like, like, uh, Trustee you baldy said. Even though some of these words may seem revolutionary, as they've said, but on the other side, that this is, this is the facts of life. This is, you know, this is, this is reality. And, and I think it's real important now for us to take these words and turn them into action. That's the only way we will make this aim we have for being number one. So, again, I would, I really want to thank everybody, because this is, this was a heavy lift. And, and it did take some. You know, it takes some real conscious thinking on people's part to, to, you know, where, where am I going to be on this, so. You know, now we need to work and get our whole, our whole district moving in this direction, this same kind of philosophy, and understanding what our. What our vision and mission there are, and, uh, with that, I think we can really start taking off. So again, thanks everyone for their participation in this. Trustee you baldy?
I'm still at awe that, uh, with, with this work that we've done, and the fact that, um. Trustee Gardner, I mean, made it, you know, real. Uh. Yes, just, I'm just trying to digest it. Trying to digest the reality of this, and this will be, once we approve this, people can cite. That it began right here. That the dramatic change will take place, and this board is the one who owns it. It, it's, this is quite a heavy lift, as the President Gross said, a heavy lift. And I'm thankful that we have enough courage to, to do what we're doing, thank you.
Thank you, Trustee you baldy, any, oh, Trustee Young? I see your light.
Um, this, uh, strategic plan and statements that we're seeing, especially the one that's so, um, powerful. Is a, uh, is providing us with a change factor. You know, change is good, um, sometimes change is uncomfortable. If it's uncomfortable, that's our job as a board, to make people comfortable. Yes, the statement probably will make you uncomfortable, but it's our job to make you comfortable, and know that, uh, and give you the guidance. In order to do the job that we feel that our students, uh, expect, and that's an ethical, equitable education in Valeo Unified School District, inclusive.
Thank you, Trustee Young, any, any other, any lasting comments, no questions, everybody's, okay, all right, then.
May I request that when you adjourn, that we adjourn in the memory of Kamani Gray?
Yeah, I wa- I was going to turn it over to you and say if you wanted to wrap up this whole strategic plan thing, and then we can move forward there. If you had any last words, you.
I think it's all been said tonight, and, and we just move forward with this, and we move forward with incorporating this into the work that's already been done with the pillars and the tenants. But I thank the board for their hard work throughout the summer, and, you know, working to, to get this right. And I think, I'm excited, this is, this is going to be a very exciting, very provocative strategic plan.
Thank you, Superintendent Spalding, announcements for upcoming meeting, and then before we do, before we go to adjournment, any announcements?
Our next, uh, board meeting is, uh, next Wednesday, September seventh.
Yep. September seventh, next week, okay, uh, Superintendent Spalding, and before we close, you have.
I would just ask that we adjourn in the memory of Kamani Gray.
Thank you. Um, at this time. This meeting is adjourned, thank you.